Good evening. I'd like to call to order the October 27th meeting of the Board of Selectment and this is actually a joint meeting with all of the committee chairs and we're so happy to have you here and thank you for coming. So let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I do want to say that Heather is, Heather Harper, is coming back with a lot of handouts for you. Some, there are copies of committee handbooks, there are copies of the committees and the members and...
Excuse me, is that here?
No, it's her.
Okay, it's on. Heather will be back shortly. She is bringing back copies of the committees themselves, the committee members, a number of different handouts that will be useful for you tonight. But before we begin, well, I want to begin the regular session with the approval of the minutes of the meeting of October 14th, the public session minutes. Here she comes. Right on time, Heather.
I would move approval of the minutes of October 14th, 2014, as presented.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Unanimous. The minutes of October 20th, public session.
I'd move approval of the October 20th minutes, as presented.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Unanimous. And lastly, the October 20th, 2014 executive session minutes not to be released.
Do we do these separately?
Separately.
I'd move approval of the executive session minutes, collective bargaining, police patrolmen, and not release.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Unanimous. Before we begin our meeting tonight, I have a really special treat for you. Last night, the town of Falmouth received this plaque and it says, "Greetings from Councillor John Boddy on behalf of Falmouth Town Council, Cornwall, England, October 2014." Some of you may remember about three years ago, I'm not exact, Falmouth celebrated its tricentennial in 1986. Falmouth, England, Falmouth, Cornwall, England, celebrated their tricentennial, I believe it was three years ago, but I'm not quite sure. But to celebrate that event, the Falmouth Chamber of Commerce held a luncheon at the Seacrest and there were many, many people there. And of course, it was in, at the noon hour, but in Cornwall, it was about seven o'clock at night. And we were able to connect with the political leaders of the council in Falmouth, Cornwall, while they were celebrating their tricentennial. So it was a great opportunity to, to actually have the opportunity to greet them, to talk to them, to congratulate them, and they with us, they were a little ahead of us on the celebration. We were only at lunch, so we couldn't quite match their exuberance, but believe me, it was really wonderful. Last evening at the Seacrest, there was the Oyster Grand tasting, a beginning for the International Oyster Symposium that's coming up this year and will be held here on the Cape a year from now in 2015. We have with us tonight Karen Dossette, who's the leader, the organizer, I don't know what her title is.
Oyster lady.
Huh?
Oyster lady.
Oyster lady. She is putting together this international world symposium and this is the first time that this will be held in the United States. And Falmouth is going to be part of this celebration next year, as well as Wellfleet. Wellfleet will have the Oyster Festival and many of the scientists from our scientific institutions here, MBL and WHOI, will be participating in the educational part of the seminar. But we have with us tonight Karen Dossette, but we also have with us Andy Nichols, who is the sculptor, who has created this beautiful, he has a model of the sculpture that he is going to create for this major world symposium, Oyster Festival. And I'd like to have Andy come up and just grab a microphone somewhere and show us the model and tell us about it, if you would. Andy is from Falmouth, Cornwall, England, by the way. Maybe that one there in the middle?
You can grab the one in the center, Andy. Sure. That comes right out of the mic stand, Andy, so you can walk it over to me.
All right. Good evening, everybody?
You can just pull it out and carry it with you.
And hold it in front.
Just, yeah, there you go.
First of all, give you a letter, greetings, as I say, from Falmouth, Cornwall. Mayor Boddy asked me to bring a plaque and also a letter, which, I'll just pass it over.
Thank you.
Invite anybody that's in Falmouth, England, over to have tea in the mayor's tea room. So, I'm a sculptor and I've been working for the last year and a half with the Maritime Museum in Cornwall on a major project. And I'm a sculptor of shells. So, we've spent a lot of time, about 40 people have input into this project in the UK. And it occurred to the mayor when I was at the Oyster Festival last month, presenting the project and an eighth scale model that I built, and he said, "Well, what about Falmouth in New England?" And I said, "Well, I am actually going to Falmouth, New England, and as I say, I was part of the event at the Seacrest yesterday." He said, "Well, it would be nice to ask them if they could maybe have a sculpture over there. We go into production in March next year with one of the international shipbuilders that are based in Falmouth and we hope to have the sculpture up and running for October next year." If I might just explain a little bit about the sculpture. This is one of these new fangled 3D printout machines, which took four days to print this one out. Took me three months to make the bigger model. It's all about oysters. The idea is that the top shell of the oyster here moves with the tide. So the top shell actually moves hydraulically up and down in concert with the tide. The stainless steel shell here contains a hydraulic ram and that's operated via a computer to set the tide. So the visitors can see immediately what the tide is doing, day or night. At night, it lights and changes color during the evening. There's a seat at the bottom of the oyster here, which seats about 30 people. The scale of it is, this is about 30 foot high, so it's about the height of a normal house. So it's big. It has a presence and it celebrates the power really and the potential to influence for the good, the oyster. The project has been designed and developed to be self-funding, so what is required is the appropriate piece of ground. The blocks that run around the bottom here are made out of this timber here. This timber is a, is from the Queen's Dock in Falmouth, which burned down sadly about 10 years ago, but the timber itself, the Greenheart timber, it's about 100 years old, was rescued. And so, we have enough timber to make more than one of these and the cost of making the whole thing is much less because there's potential for other copies to be made. So the way that the sponsorship of the project works is individual companies buy a block. So far in the UK, we've sold about six or seven of the blocks. We launched it last month. They tend to be about $8,000 and for that, you get the block, you get the seat, a plaque, and a limited edition copy of the sculpture. Forty-two blocks, the cost is about $300,000, $250,000. It's made out of marine grade stainless, it has to work 24/7. So that's the project. Thank you for your time. If you've got any questions, then you're very welcome to ask me.
Anybody have any questions? No? Anybody? Thank you so much, Andy. You're really wonderful.
I'll leave some brochures here.
Thank you so much. And for those of you who missed the oyster celebration last night, it was really amazing and wonderful. And there were oysters from everywhere, of all description and prepared in many different ways. And so I'm sure next fall at this time, when the symposium is going on, that we will all be very much engaged in it and I hope so because there will be people here from all over the world to attend this. Like I said, it will be the first time that it's ever been held in America, so this will be a big thing for us. So the next item on our agenda is the authorization for the proposed bond refinancing. I know Jennifer Petit is here and Patty O'Connell. So, maybe you can explain to us what we're doing with your good work.
Absolutely. Good evening. The town of Falmouth has been presented with a refinancing opportunity. We're working with our financial advisors and we always monitor the interest rates and we look at bond issues. And usually around 10 years in a bond issue, you're eligible to refinance if the interest rates are low enough. There was a memo in your packet. Right now, we're looking at refinancing some debt from 2003 and 2005. We're also looking at some from 2007 to put in escrow, but we need to look and make sure that those issues are eligible. And right now, those debt issues, we have some excluded debt, we have some water. There are a lot of debt issues involved in this refinance, maybe 10. And we'll currently have, we have rates between 4% and 4.625%. And if we were to finance, refinance today, we'd have a net interest rate of 2.45%. So I just wanted to come in front of the board, just to get the authorization to move ahead with this refinancing. Interest rates change daily. The savings might be more, the savings might be less. If we get a savings in every single year for the rest of the issues, which is about 12 years, then we would move ahead with the refinancing. It would look like we would come back before you around November 17th, so you could sign the documentation. We would have already gone out to bid at that point, but we have a lot of work to get to that point. So it might not be November 17th, it might be a little later. But we just wanted to present this with you and with the authorization to move forward, we can start the paperwork and start analyzing what debt issues would be eligible for this opportunity.
Thank you, Jennifer. I think we always appreciate the due diligence of our finance director in looking at these opportunities. So I think we would need a motion from the board, not to approve them tonight, but to authorize Ms. Petit to move forward with this refinancing opportunity.
So move. Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Yes, Becky.
Does this have any effect on our bond rating when you go into another debt, a new one?
It would have a positive effect on the bond rating, if any at all. We would definitely present this when we were ready to refinance, but bond our short-term debt, if you will. We will have a standard of course in. And so, just the simple fact of a strong management and looking at opportunities to refinance and taking advantage of those opportunities would reflect positively on the bond rating.
Okay. And second question. In these issues that you're talking about, that are going to be eligible, how many did you say?
Well, right now, we looked at probably around 10. Some are eligible, some are. It's just a preliminary investigation of what type of issues might be eligible. There's some water in here. There's, you know, they're from probably 10 or 12 years ago. Several different bond issues. But some water, pumping station, something from New Silver Beach, and there's a few land acquisitions as well.
And the negative side of this, if this didn't happen?
There really isn't. You know, if the interest rates went up and for some reason this opportunity slipped away and they just really went up in the next three weeks, we just wouldn't be able to refinance right now. But we are in a strong, the town of Falmouth is in a strong financial position, so there really isn't anything negative. We didn't, we really do want to take advantage of these opportunities when they come around.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Sam.
Yep. Jennifer, what's your estimate of the combined principle that we're looking at here for these issues, for those 10 items?
This is a preliminary analysis. I just really want to stress that. I've already, after we've looked at this, there's a couple of issues I'll probably have to pull up because they might not be eligible. But right now, we're looking at a total savings of $2.1 million. We're looking at anywhere from maybe $50,000 to $150,000 a year. We would want to make sure that we have a savings in every single year. We wouldn't move forward unless we did. With the first analysis that we did, we were looking at maybe $95,000 in the first year and then $150 in the second and then it would kind of even out. We want to make sure we have the same savings in every fiscal year. We're not trying to, you know, put it on the front end or put it on the back end. So we want to smooth that out. Now we're working with a financial advisor in order to do that.
So are those numbers you just gave as savings?
Yes.
Yeah, savings.
Yes, savings. And I put in the memo, I think it was like anywhere from $50,000 to $100,000, $75,000 to $125,000. And that's really the range.
That's significant.
But unfortunately, I don't want to get everybody's hopes up because I started to look at some of the issues and a couple of issues I'm going to have to pull up because they aren't eligible. But we'll make sure that, you know, we really look at this and do our due diligence to make sure that we can get everything.
Great. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, we have to take the vote. And you already have a motion and a second. Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed? Unanimous. Thanks again, Jennifer. I want to welcome you all tonight, which I already did once, but now I'd like to invite you to come up here and sit with us. We have a lot of chairs around the U here and the chair, the chairman of the various committees are invited to come up. The public, we were asked that you stay in your seats back there. And we're really pleased with the turnout tonight. It's always very helpful.
Heidi Murata's here representing.
Right. And if you're representing another committee, their chair is not here, please come up too and join us. Heidi, that's you.
Actually, I sent her on to sign in sheet.
Yeah, that'd be good. We're sending around a sign-in sheet, so you can sign in. And there's three more up here and another one over here. And I hope we have enough for everybody. It's hard to believe that it's been over a year since we last met. Does anybody need a copy of the handbook?
Especially the chairs.
Anybody on this end? Two?
Four.
Four. So, the way we're going to proceed tonight is, this is going, the bulk, or the prime part of the meeting is going to be between and among the Board of Selectment and the chairs. And if there is public comment, we're going to leave that to the end. So if you have questions, that, those of you out here, and I'm so glad you came as well, please jot them down so that at the end of our discussion, we'll hear from you and hear what your good thoughts might be as well. So is everybody here? Everybody's here. So what I'm going to ask us to do is to just go around the table and introduce yourself and tell us what committee you chair. And we'll start with you, John.
I'm John Checklich. I'm chair of the Energy Committee and I'm also the town representative on the Cape and Vineyard Electric Cooperative.
Yeah, I guess everyone's going to, maybe you should pass the microphone down, otherwise it won't come across. Do you want to start that again? You can take it out of them. There's one on either side, I guess.
Hi, I'm John Checklich, chair of the Energy Committee and also the town representative on the Cape and Vineyard Electric Cooperative.
Just a second. Thank you. I'm Ed Haddad. I'm the chairman of the Historic District Commission.
I'm Jane Perry. I'm the chairwoman of the Commission on Disabilities.
Hello, I'm Heidi Murata. I'm representing Susan Adessa from Falmouth School Committee.
I'm Mike Leader. I'm the chair of the Cable Advisory Committee.
I'm Michael Galassil. I'm chairman of the Falmouth DIC and the Town Building Committee.
I'm Ralph Herbst, chairman, Community Preservation Committee.
I'm Alan Neese. I'm chair of the Falmouth Conservation Council.
And there's another mic on this side. It might be easier to keep one on each side.
My name's David. My name's David Haddad. I'm the chairman of the Falmouth Solid Waste Affairs.
Tom Quaraville, chairman of the Falmouth Conservation Commission.
Scott Lindell, chairman of the Bike Waste Committee.
Art Calp, chairman of the Design Review Committee.
Robert Muscley, chairman of the Veterans Advisory Committee.
Jeff Lancaster, chairman of the Affirmative Action Committee.
Jonathan Snyder, vice chairman, Solid Waste Committee.
Luke Crager, chairman of Solid Waste Advisory Committee.
Jim, there's two more, there's a couple more seats up here if you want to move up and move to the table. Ed.
The chairman of the Beast Committee couldn't be at the table, so.
Thank you.
I'm Judy Maniani, chairman of the Falmouth Heritage Committee.
I'm Nancy Hayward, I'm the vice chairman of the Falmouth Historical Commission.
Chairman of the Water and Environmental Committee, not here this evening, so.
Otis Fuller, chairman of the Board of Library and Rusty's.
Otis, there's a seat up here. Don't be afraid. You just might be called on to say something, that's all. Okay, I hope you've all had an opportunity to take a look at the committee handbook, which was revised from the discussions we had last year. And I, before I do begin though, I must say, Paula Lector is here. And Paula Lector has been such a great monitor of town government in many, many respects and she has been so helpful to us as the Board of Selectment. If things are not posted properly, if the minutes aren't in, she's very, very good about bringing that to our attention. And she has done that tonight and she will have some handouts for you. She has also prepared a report card of how all of us are doing in terms of what we agreed we were going to do last year in relation to a lot that has to do with the minutes, the proper recording of the minutes, the proper presentation or delivery of the minutes to the town clerk when they get posted on the website. So at the end of the meeting, we're not going to give you your report cards now or follow up, but at the end of the meeting, you'll have a chance to see how well you did this year compared to last year. And I happened to take a peek at them earlier today when you emailed them to me. And actually, there is good improvement, no question about it. I think that all of you should be commended for what you are doing. You're paying attention to the job that you have and we're following some of the important issues we brought up at our last meeting. So if you would agree, I think we might start with, first of all, the role of the chairman. There isn't anything necessarily defined in the guidelines. There's a, there's a section in there about conduct for members of the boards, committees, and the commissions, responsibility to the administration, some comments related to chairman, but not specifically. So I wondered if anyone wanted to take off on the idea of the role of the chairman, if you think there are things that the town could do, the selectmen could do, or any of you could do, to make, to make your job easier, but also to make it more, to make yourselves more accessible perhaps, or whatever you might think about the role of chairman. If you're satisfied, that's good. Anybody want to take that one on? Yes, Jane.
I'll start. Okay. I'm Jane Perry and I'm the chairman of the Commission on Disabilities. I might be jumping ahead, but as I looked at the agenda, and I think one thing that should be put in the handbook is the job descriptions of chairperson, vice chairperson, and secretary. Also, I think there should be also an appendancy of a sample agenda and also sample minutes. I know a lot of committees, because I watch them on television, I am visually impaired, so I don't get to all the committees, but I try. That's one of my goals, is to get to most or all of your committees. But I think that's a, there's a lot of new people that come on and haven't had the chance or the opportunity to experience parliamentary procedures or to be a chairperson of a committee and I think that would be helpful. The one thing that I think is very helpful that has happened this year is that we have a liaison and that person, even though they cannot make our meeting or make any of other people's committee meetings, that we have a connection with the selectmen. And I think that's a very, very important step because I was very involved with the Tranputation Management Commission. And as the selectmen know, that is very sore thorn in my side, that has been not in resistance. And that was one of the major problems that we had, why it disseminated, is because there was no liaison or the liaison person did not connect with the chairperson of the committee. So I think that's a very, very important step. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Those were really important comments because the liaison has, has been in the works for quite a while. This year particularly, this board, I'm not speaking for myself, I'm speaking for the other four, have really taken this on, this responsibility on, in a very direct and, I think, effective way. They are really making every effort to, to get out there and be at the meetings and just be present, just the, just to have the opportunity of hearing the dialogue among the various committees, but also the opportunity, if you have questions, that you need answered somewhere else, that they can be there to do that. Anybody want to comment on Jane's comments regarding liaisons and the chair? Yes?
Is that going to come up later on the agenda? I believe it is. Liaison.
Yes, it is. So we'll talk about that later. Okay.
I don't know if you want to hit the overview, just sort of walk through the major.
You mean the forward, the overview?
Yeah, and then major committee membership, committee leadership, just the major highlights of the structure itself.
What about to you?
Before we do the breakout, right here on page three.
Oh, page three. Okay. So let's move to page three and, and talk about the ABCDs of committee membership related. We should probably start with appointments. You know that the Board of Selectment makes most of the appointments, if not all, and not, we don't make all of them, we do make some of them. What are your concerns about appointments, about the process itself? Does anybody have any suggestions as to how it might be either more streamlined, more effective, more responsive?
I have, actually I have a question, maybe for the chairs, as to what could we do as the board? What could you do as chairs? What could the public do to help us with the number of vacancies we have? How can we all work together to get these vacancies filled more quickly, get information out that the vacancies exist? Is there, is there something we could do more or, you know, what other ideas do we have to really make sure that all these committees have enough members that if one person's absent, you might still have a core? absent, you might still have a quorum, as opposed to if some committees can't meet for three or four months because they don't have a quorum, either because the membership's low, or someone's absent from it?
Yes. Tell me your name again. I'm Alan. Yeah, so when you stand up, if you could just give your name again.
Yeah, Alan Meese, Cultural Council.
Right.
You can't hear me?
I can hear you, but maybe others can't. Maybe others can.
Yeah. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
It's really for TV, not so much for the people here.
Am I listening to TV? Well, anyway, yeah, I mean, it's difficult, you get people, well, it's difficult to get people to volunteer to be on the committee. And they have a lot of things to do on the committee, cultural council I'm talking about. And they have to be approved by the Massachusetts Cultural Council, they have to take a training, and, kind of like a test thing. And, yeah, and then they have to show up to meeting, and they have to read applications, and blah, blah, blah. So, I tell them that they're supposed to be approved by the selectmen, but I don't really lie to them about it, and it seems like an extra thing that they have to do, you know? I have all the committee people I need, but I don't, I don't think the town knows that I have all these committee people, because somebody's, yeah, somebody said it was listed that maybe we didn't have enough members. Anyway, so that's it. I haven't asked them to come before the board. I don't even know how it really works, that they come before the board. See, I feel like it's more the Massachusetts Cultural Council that we have to sort of be cleared by. Any comment on all this?
No, at the moment, I don't, but I will certainly look into it.
Okay.
You're right, there is a certain separateness in it, maybe that's not the best word, regarding the cultural council.
Yeah.
So we'll take a look at that unless Heather or Julian have any more specific knowledge, but we'll look into that.
So, yes.
Because we want you to be relevant, too. We want to know you're there and doing good work.
Yeah, it almost seems like there, that there's a gap there about knowing that we have, who's on the committee, that we have a committee, that we have enough people on the committee. I could give you names.
We'll be in touch.
Okay, good.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Susan, Nancy, I mean, I always call her Susan. That's, that's because I came from that era.
Nancy Hayward, I'm the Vice Chairman of the Historical Committee. I'm the Vice Chairman of the, it's not a committee, it's a commission, a commission that needs members. And I have several times wondered, since you started that few minutes before the selectmen's meetings, when people can make comments, I have wondered, is it permissible, is it appropriate for me to stand up at that time, besides the few things I have said, to say, as a member of the Falmouth Historical Commission, we need members? And to perhaps give a brief description of what I think a member of a historical commission should have, is a few qualifications. I don't know that anywhere there's anything spelled out about qualifications, but there are a few qualities that would be helpful. So, that's my comment about how we can bring the Historical Commission to the general public, who's hopefully watching you occasionally on television, can bring this before them. Thank you.
I have a comment to that.
Go ahead. In here.
Nancy, before you give the mic away, what is your view about combining Historic Districts Commission and Historical Commission?
Thank you for the question. I have very mixed views about that, because there are some dividing points between the Historical Commission and the Historic District Commission. And I am not sure if both of those commissions are short of members, and I'm not sure that combining them, which truly gives you double the work, if you can't get the person to join the Historical Commission, and you can't get them to join the Historic District Commission, what is going to impulse somebody to join the joint commission? They deal with different historic assets in the nature of buildings. They deal with different buildings in the town of Falmouth. Now, I don't think this is the time, I have also thought of getting myself on the selectmen's agenda. I, it's not appropriate for me to explain the differences between these two commissions at the moment, I think it's too many paragraphs.
Well, I think what you bring up, though, Nancy, is the, is the issue of quorums, as well as the issue of recruitment. And maybe that's something that we could talk about, because recruitment's actually equal quorums in a, in a certain sense. But how do you, I noticed the, the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, Ruth, has taken on a, a role of recruitment, and has been fairly successful in getting, what, three or four new members to her committee over a fairly short period of time, which is very good. But have you thought about what you might be able to do in terms of recruitment? And, and, and do you have issues of quorums? Anybody? No, no issue? Yes?
Tom Corvo, Concom. This year, unfortunately for our hearings, we've had a couple continuances, and it's unfortunate for the applicant. Recusals, because of involvement on the project, sicknesses, that type of thing. I actually ended up, I had to recuse myself, went to walk away, and noticed that I only had three people. And I felt horrible for the applicant. Kudos on being able to recruit somebody, you know, that's awesome. I can't tell you, it's like shooting myself in the foot, as soon as I say, would you like to, and, you know, people run. However, the ones that don't run are the ones that would be the people we want. It's a, it's a, a big blessing that I've been able to contribute, like I have. All these people here, I've seen in my community, my liaison has been a tremendous asset. It's a, it's a comfort level for me, that the acting as the chair was so much different than just the commissioner. As a commissioner, I could, I could throw punches, I could, I could really just do a lot different on the board. The chair is the one that, hopefully, and what I'm hopeful that I'm doing, is that just has a good hearing. Things, the information comes in, the information goes out, we close the hearing, and we get things done. I've noticed, we're very lucky with the board that we have right now. Just quickly, I wrote down my fellow members, and next to each one, I put little, like, Mike Powers is an engineer, Mike Di Gregorio's, Mario Di Gregorio's plants, Ross Robbins is plans, Mary Schumacher details, Jonathan Polony is a new set of eyes. I'm, I'm describing that because hopefully somebody in the audience hears it, it's a diverse thing. You don't need to be a specific slot, you know, it's, it's a very broad thing that we paint. And as long as you're willing to learn, and I learn every time I'm at the chair, you know, I do not know everything, far from it, and I make mistakes. And fortunately, the board that I sit on interacts with me. And when I stumble through something, I acknowledge it, hopefully learn from it, and move on. And as far as recruiting, I, you know, I go to the Lumbead, all, all the places where I interact, and try to do that, the coffee shop, wherever. And it's just something that we reach out, even in, even making a small announcement during our hearings, and saying, look, we have two or three openings, both part-time and full-time. Hopefully, it just goes out, as it is now, your meetings are watched far more than ours. I think people have a genuine interest in what the selectmen are saying, there's more of a viewing audience. So that if, there was just a couple minutes of this week, this month, once a month, we have various boards open, we would really appreciate anybody's interest in this, dot, 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 and here you go. But I know we're going to jump into liaisons later, but I, I do want to thank Mr. Patterson for his involvement on my board, because it has been a, a big benefit for me.
Thank you, Swine. Yes, Dan.
For my board, the zoning board, I think it's a posting issue. We've had a vacancy for an associate member now three or four months, but it seems like we have a problem getting it, for whatever reason, on the town website, I'm sure you're busy, you know, I'm not looking to cast blame, but trying to, like Doug says, looking for a way to make it better. So, I was down associate, now I have another member that's on a leave of absence. As of today, I have somebody retiring, so that leaves us with four people. So like Tom said, it's tough when you need the four for the quorum, just not fair for the applicant, you know, now you need a unanimous decision, so it's, it's kind of tough. But Doug asked a better way that we could do this, maybe you could, at least for the regulatory boards, give them access to some budget money, so they can do their own advertising and, you know, take a little pressure off the, your office, too, I think. And I've done the same thing as Tom, you know, you're trying to get people to, you're recruiting people wherever you can, trying to get them on the board, like Tom says, you know, it's a diverse thing, you don't need all attorneys, or whatever, in his case, everybody's a, you know, landscape architect, whatever the case may be, you know, it's just people sitting down, common sense, going over what's before them, so. But I do think access, you know, like in my case, we have an administrator, so she could, she's already advertising for other parents that are coming up, it just seems like a simple thing to make.
Do you think it'd be appropriate to ask the chairs to write a column for the paper saying, this is what our committee does, and we have these openings, and every week, maybe a different committee chair writes that little column, and it becomes a regular thing, saying, hey, guys out there in town, these are what our different committees do, and this one has two openings that are full-time, when it's alternate, just as a...
Anything that would get them to get out there. I think, Mike, though, our town clerk, I think we give him the duties of the boards, I think that's kind of his thing, but, and as far as recruitment, I don't know, maybe try to get some feedback from, like, the administrators, you know, those boards that have it, so. So hopefully you give that a lot of thought, the budget part of it, I think it'd be...
Yeah, Julian, we're just mentioning that Diane Davidson, in the, in the administrator's office, or town manager's office, advertises monthly for the, for the vacant positions in all, on all boards. Are...
Yeah, I would say the newspaper is one, a good way to get to the public. And I know we've advertised maybe every issue, I'm not sure of what the openings are that we need. I think we could enlarge that, that small article to include a one-liner under each committee, as to what it is they actually do, to give the public an idea of, of these committees, and keep them advised as to how many openings there are, each, each issue, you know, every month, every week.
Okay, John, and then...
It seems to me, Falmouth newcomers might be an avenue, they're over 300 members, and maybe we could consider advertising in the local newsletters. For instance, newcomers has a newsletter, the senior center puts out a newsletter, and if, if we, I don't know if we would use the standard ad that we put in the paper, or we, you know, have a feature article in each of their newsletters, but newcomers last month had 30 nonprofits at their, at their meeting, discussing with all of the members volunteer opportunities. And, you know, it's too late now, but it would have been nice if the town was, was there also to, to share with, with, with all those folks what volunteer opportunities are, are amenable.
Right, that's really good thought. Sam?
Well, I just thought of an, an immediate opportunity, we have precinct meetings coming up, and these are people who have already stepped up their leadership positions. Maybe we should have a handout to be distributed at the precinct meetings, to just indicate the various committees and how many positions are open, and maybe that one-liner of just what purpose they actually serve. That seems to me to maybe be fertile ground.
Good idea. Yes, oh, yes, you were next.
Even in the town hall, there's several bulletin boards, you know, almost like job postings. If they were always up there with a brief description of the committee, and what their role is, and their responsibilities, just there on a regular basis, a lot of people come into town hall, and there's nothing there that, and that doesn't cost you anything.
I don't know if FCTV would have the time, but some people are a little hesitant to jump into things, they, they might not know what the job is about, whether they're sufficiently qualified. I don't, you know, certainly this would have to be vetted, but the idea of the chairs just taking up five minutes and talking about the committee, I mean, what I'm hearing here is just a lot of enthusiasm, you know, the undercurrent of what everyone is saying is that I like what I do. I mean, that, that's what I'm hearing, it's important, you know, I have a relationship with, with the town, and I serve the people, and, you know, in a, and, you know, it's good, important work, and the board is, you know, a great group of people. And I think maybe if, I, you know, we all have limited amounts of time, but I think it would, if anyone was interested, it would be great to check and see if there was such an opportunity, just, you know, it would take three minutes even, you know, so people would, would have that direct contact with the chairs.
If I might, Madam Chairman, the, that particular thing that you're alluding to is being done by Jeff Wyman right here, he is putting together a thing like that with the different committees. As a matter of fact, he just did one with us on the traffic advisory committee. So he's getting around to it, but it's just one person, so it takes time to get everything together. But if the committee chairman would get ahold of Jeff and let him know, it could be done. The second thing that I would like to say is this, in looking at this pink pen here, you have some very talented IT people who could put something together on our website, and would be in conjunction with our town clerk, a flashing red or pink light, and you click on it, and it lists all of the vacancies that are available, or that you need people for. That would be a quick way for the people to see what's going on. So with that, it's cheap money, and I know the IT people could do it.
Going along with that, the idea of FCTV, I know they run those, what do you call them, those messages?
Scrolls.
Scrolls at the bottom of the page, maybe occasionally, we could scroll through some of the, the other thought I had was maybe using a bulletin board in town hall, and on a monthly basis, featuring one committee, and having information that might change maybe each week for a month, but featuring one committee, who the people are, that are on it, the work they do, some of the significant accomplishments of the committees, and then the next month, feature another committee. That's just a thought that went through my head, as you were all talking. And who else had their hand up? Jane, yes?
Thank you. Jane Perry, Chairman of the Commission on Disabilities. I have mentioned this to the selectmen at a public forum, that, you know, we all send a report into the town, our annual town report, and that's great. I don't think a lot of people read the town report. So what I would like to suggest is that maybe on the selectmen's agenda, which we used to do, is we used to be allowed 15 minutes, and we were on the selectmen's agenda, and we gave a report of what our committee did. Because that way, we're on FCTV, and someone says, gee, that's a really great committee, or I have someone who is disabled in my family, maybe I could give some time to that committee, or learn about that committee. Or, I'm a veteran, or my wife is a veteran, a spouse of a veteran, and doesn't understand what I, you know, what I need, even if they go to the veterans' agent. So I think that's a very important aspect, that we come back to doing that sort of thing. The other thing is, my request is, which I spoke to Mr. Sussow, we don't have an administrative person that helps us do things. Before, we had Mr. George Bybee, the same thing with the Affirmative Action Committee. We don't have anybody that does the administrative part, that goes out on site visits, or helps us to make sure that we're, you know, serving the people that we're supposed to be serving, except at our meetings. So I hope that we can get an ADA coordinator, American Disabilities Act coordinator, that would help us define some of the things that we need to do. We are not a regulatory board, but by state statute, we are a quasi-regulatory board. And that's the other thing, is that people don't understand what we do. You know, the Americans Disability Act is our right, but in actuality, we do a lot of things under the AAB, which is the Architectural Access Board. So what I would like to hopefully suggest, that when you have projects, or you know people that have concerns, that they come and ask us, or be a part of that project, or that, that scenario. Because a lot of times, when they do comply with the ADA, or the AAB, when someone who is disabled goes to use it, it doesn't work. So that's why I think it's important to have an ADA coordinator. And I hope we get one soon, because it's a very needed position. And also, I think that we need to come back and be heard on the selectmen's agenda. that we need to come back and be heard on the selectmen's agenda, because like the other people said, FCTV is a wonderful resource, and it was in 2009 was the last time that we came, before the selectmen gave a report, thank you.
Madam Chairman, if I might just qualify, or clarify, and I appreciate Jane's comments, we have designated the ADA coordinator function to be within the building department, Sir Building Commissioner Aladio Gore and his colleagues within the building department have been designated to respond to those ADA and access-related issues for the time being, we will see how that unfolds and further evolves, but I do want to confirm that, that role and that function is available through that department, and if there are any questions, we're happy to assist in the town manager's office as well.
Thank you, that's the first I heard, and I knew that was going to be the answer, but it would have been nice to communicate.
I thought we spoke about that at our last meeting, apologize.
Hi, thank you. I'd really like to see younger people get involved, I think that, you know, the older that you get, you become a little bit more brave to speak in public, but maybe we could reach out through the Chamber of Commerce and actually talk to the young professionals group there, and maybe try to get them involved on the boards. The diversity of boards is the most important thing, so you're not having one particular perspective, so I usually see that that's what's lacking, is just younger involvement, and maybe there's a way that we can recruit it, you know, we talk about civic duty, and, you know, high school, and, you know, volunteerism, so I think that we should try to carry that over, so that there's not this big gap between, you know, stopping at a high school volunteer, and then, you know, not getting involved until you're much older, so.
Anybody else? Mark, what comment is at the end?
I want to read.
No, but you're not a chair, this is with the chairs in the selectmen. So, let's go back to page three, this is the, we've talked about some of these appointments, we started out with appointments, the duration, the duties of the board, the committee leadership, attendance, does anybody want to comment on any of those topics? People pretty much satisfied with three-year appointments, I guess that probably works out. David? Yeah, who had the question?
Ruth had a question.
Oh, Ruth, I'm sorry.
In the Summer Committee, I think a lot of what we do is, is learning about changing regulations, and changing initiatives in solid ways, this is, this is, this is an area of tremendous change, and so it does help to have at least some of the members very well informed, so I think, I'm not sure that the, the limited number of three-year appointments is appropriate for a committee that doesn't regulate, it doesn't give permits, but it does, it is a sort of fact-finding committee.
Jim, you had a question?
Yes, Jim Lancaster, Chairman of the Affirmative Action Committee, this, this, we've talked quite a bit about getting new members, and our committee members have been actively working among people we know, and trying to explain what we do, and getting them to come onboard, it is an ironic thing that good people just think they don't have time, and we just found someone tonight that will be hopefully filing a membership application with the selectmen, but we as a board, as a committee, have no legal powers, we can only collect information, we had, we used to have one affirmative action officer in town, and it was decided last town meeting last year to eliminate that full-time post, when George Bybee retired, and now we deal with a person who has had that job attached to their own job, for instance, in town hall, Denise Coleman is the affirmative action officer designated for the town of Falmouth, we had Mark Wilson at the school department, and of course, Mark left, and Dr. Gifford just notified me this week that she has appointed the new Director of Finances and Building to, again, take on that added duty. We are required, under the code, to report to the selectmen on a yearly basis on our findings for the prior year, and to suggest and recommend new equal-opportunity ideas or issues, policy to you, that hasn't happened, I think I'm coming up on the agenda, I'm not sure, Madam Chairman, but when you're dealing with individuals who are overtaxed in their own duties, shall we say, they're executive personnel in town government, Denise Coleman, and obviously, a gentleman that just came on the job at the school department is, is involved with a great many other issues, the issues of affirmative action and equal-opportunity is outlined by federal and state law, are really complex, as anyone that has had to deal with them will tell you, and I have to say, maybe I'm using a form I shouldn't use, Madam Chairman, and you can gavel me down, that's all right, but I think the town really needs to look at how we're handling this, there are issues, especially in our schools, where children at risk, that George Bybee used to deal with, aren't being dealt with.
Your comments are great, but they're strained.
I'm strained, I know, Madam Chairman, and I have to say, I won't, I know this is coming up later, Selectmen Moran is our liaison, and that has really helped us in shaping how we deal with policy on our committee, and I just think that we need to do, these ideas that I've heard tonight are very, very helpful, and we need to really get out front and get more people, young people.
I think we all agree with that, your question is, you're very welcome, Jim. I'd like to move to page, well, we are, somebody else? Oh, Ralph.
You're on page three, yes.
I'm, well, I'm on page four, but you can go to three.
I had my hand up while you were on page three.
Oh, sorry, Ralph. Maybe I need glasses.
I believe, I believe that's in the charter, on item D on that page.
Yes.
It talks about adopting rules and procedures, the Community Preservation Committee adopted rules and procedures our very first year, nine, nine and a half years ago, and what we did with that was we, as a committee, decided how we wanted to operate, and established our own rules and procedures, and then we updated every year, but we publish it for ourselves, and you, I highly recommend to all the committees here tonight that you do that, that you actually write it down and publish it, and so that you can hand it to new people that come onto your committee, and so they understand how you've been operating, and how you operate in the future.
Very good suggestion, Ralph, very definitely, that's good, good, I mean, everybody on a committee anywhere really wants to know what it is, why are they there, what it is they need to do, and that's good, David.
I think that's a great idea, Ralph, I know we have that, and that works well for us, but Ralph did bring up a good point, talking about responsibilities, procedures, every, I think I mentioned this last year to you, every board is a little different, some are more formal than others, so just to stick everybody in the same slot's kind of tough, you know, some are looser, obviously, the regulatory ones are more rigid, and, so I think, not only for the chairman, but the board to kind of weed through that and figure it out for themselves how to conduct it.
So, maybe this handbook should identify perhaps more regulatory boards from other boards, and maybe have comments that are more specific for boards that are really governed by state regulations, or other local regulations, other than maybe a different, would that be helpful? Because if you were, if you were a member, say, of the zoning board of appeals, and you read this, there's nothing specifically year for year, it's very general, so I guess the question is, would it be more helpful to have more specific information for the regulatory boards?
I think you might have mentioned it last year, this is a good, a guide.
Yeah, this is a very basic, general guide.
But everybody has their own little nuances to figure out on their own.
Yeah, no, maybe that's too detailed, maybe, maybe individuals should get that when they get on the committee.
Right. And I think they're better able to write it.
That's probably more appropriate, John?
I think it would be appropriate to, to define the differences between a regulatory and an advisory board, what the different expectations are from all of you.
That's a good suggestion, Ed?
I didn't want to continue on this conversation, so-
That's okay.
Okay, I just had a question on the duration again, which is-
Oh, duration of appointments, sure.
Duration of appointments is not clear, because I know in our board, we have alternates, so it's not clear, I know, for example, when I joined my board, I was, I was appointed as an alternate to replace someone, so I had a short term, and then went into regular terms, so it's not clear then, is, is there a, is it X number of years that you could be on a board, what if you're on as an alternate for two terms, and then go become the regular voting member for two terms, or, for those boards, I don't know if every board has alternates, but I know our board does, does this same apply, this duration of term, apply to regular members, alternate members?
My interpretation's been that it's, you cannot be appointed for more than three full, three-year terms as a regular member, nothing else adds up, so if you have a, fulfilling a one-year unexpired term, that doesn't count till you're three, three, so you could technically be appointed for 10 years, if you're filling out a one-year term, you can then have three full-year terms following that.
Even as an alternate? Yes, well, no. There is no limit on an alternate, but normally, I would think an alternate would fill a permanent term, eventually, yeah.
Okay, so once they fill that permanent slot, then they go under this-
They go under that.
This guideline, thank you.
That's, that's my understanding.
Thank you.
Art?
Does anyone take any notes here, just of these great comments that are coming up?
Yes.
Because the meeting could end, and that would be the end of all these comments, unless somebody-
No, we will, we will get something back to you, and if there are changes, if your comments reflect that changes need to be made in the document, we will make those, and either italicize them, or put them in red, or whatever, but we will get back to you with the comments. Becky?
I just have a thought, as boards change, and it's happened to me a couple of times, you have a member that is outstanding, and they're at the end of a three-year, three terms, and I think about the loss to that committee, and I think there possibly should be a way that the committee, in conjunction with the selectmen, would somehow change the wording, that when you have an excellent member that has to leave because of time and the ability, so when you talk about having blank places, and you don't have someone to fill them, you're really starting from scratch again, now, maybe it's not a good idea, you would have to think in each one of your committees, whether that, when I say that, you may be thinking, oh, I can't wait till this term is over, and that's finished, you might, and there's people in our life like that, but I don't know if it's a positive, but I think we really lose some of our very seasoned committee members because of a date, and maybe you think that's the worst thing in the world, but I'd like to kind of hear a few answers on that.
Tom, you were burdened by that this year, I know.
Well, as, as idyllic as that sounds, I am not in favor of that whatsoever, three years is three years, is three years, is three years, that's nine years of commitment by some individual, that, you can't, you have to have a turnover, I personally believe you have to have a turnover, you cannot have the same crew all the time, it just gets stagnant, there's, one of those, one of my newest members, Jonathan, that little comment I made about new eyes, some of the newest members have given the simplest questions, stuff that I took for granted, that five years ago, I would have asked that question, and I just took it for granted, and that's what you need, it can't, it, you miss the good people, but hopefully they emulate, you emulate them, they're the ones that help educate, and make the board cohesive, and when they're gone, you try to make them proud, you know, that's, that's, that's how, I just, I really, I think that what we have, we work with it, don't overcomplicate it, the, fortunately, clearing up on the alternates, you know, we've had some pretty fantastic alternates, too, they wouldn't go full-time, you know, and we miss them, too, it's, it's one of the, it's one of the things that I think enough energy spent in that timeframe, give somebody a break, it's only a year or two, and they can come back, you know, and hopefully in that year or two, others pick up, that's what it's all about, is you can't always have that same shouldering of responsibility on individuals, it's just, it's just too much.
You don't think it's one of the reasons we asked so many vacancies, you think as we follow that rule?
I think, I think, well, I think the vacancies, you know, we're, we're coming off of, in my trade anyways, you know, we're just coming off of people really struggling over the last X amount of years, the younger people love to have them, you know, Jonathan's another young person, but the struggles that they have, starting off families and all that type of thing, that gap you're talking about, after high school, and college, and things, all the commitments, and figuring life out, you know, we're fortunate that we have some really nice kids, we have an Eagle Scout project, this kid is tremendous, you know, he's gone through hurdles like crazy over the last couple of weeks, you know, yes, there's absentees, I, every time I look at that mic, I just want to reach out there and just grab somebody and say, look, it's not that, if I can do it, you can do it, you know, everybody in this room has helped me in one way or another, whether they realize it or not, this isn't rocket science, we have staff, we have, we have other people to rely on, the chair, you know, it's not that tough a job, it's, it's a responsibility, and I take it seriously, but I have administrator and staff to help me with this, and these people, this young lady here is so articulate at what her needs are, you know, she's committed and passionate about it, you know, if that doesn't strike a tone with somebody, that's not a problem with what she's doing, it's their problem, you know, this is, this is how we engage and drag people in, you know, I don't mean drag.
Well, I'm just, I'm just kind of curious sometimes, because I know we do lose really good talent because of that rule, we really have, we've lost in the town, on committees that would have benefited if that rule hadn't been there, but I understand everything you're saying, and you're in the position of being a chairman, and, and I understand that, but I feel bad when some people get caught for the timeline.
Okay, I want to go to-
I think you should bowl the committee member, because I think that's one opinion, and I think it might even change based on a regulatory committee versus an advisory committee, because there's a body of expertise that is very important, that you do lose, I think you do lose.
Especially-
You know, there's subtleties in the laws, and subtlety in regulations, and subtleties of how you interpret those regulations, that you learn over time, and you learn based on experience, and different, different problems that are brought before you, and I know members that come on our board are sometimes very uncomfortable at first, because they don't understand those, and you learn those in times how to deal with them, so, I don't agree with you, and I think you can ju, you can juggle that, you change your chairmanships, you move people around, so you don't get the staleness that you might get, you're not keeping someone as a chairman forever, which I understand, but I think the experience is a very important board, and that- the experience is a very important board, and I think in fairness to the people who come before those boards, the experience is really an important aspect.
Heidi?
You know, I was just going to point out that with school committee having nine members on board, I talked about diversity of young and old, but there's really diversity of experience. When I look to people like Sam Patterson and Susan Augusta that have longevity on those boards, it's absolutely critical for us to make really good judgments based on historical records and what has happened in the past with Thalmann Public Schools. So, you know, I think your board, the larger that it can get, if you can have those longevity members that are really involved and know the history of where your board has made certain decisions in the past, things cycle around all the time, and there are laws and there are things that happen that other board members help to educate those new members that come on. So, I mean, I think that it's really good to have that diversity and longevity, and maybe there's a way that you can build that in.
Mike, did you listen to anyone just said? No, you, no?
Well, no, I, I guess I would have commented that, that it seems that regulatory boards, whole purpose is to have consistency in application of those regulations. There are rules that are set aside. Why does someone become stale in applying the rules? Doesn't quite make sense to me. But I, I also agree with some of the discussions, there's tremendous differences between a regulatory board, which is often seeing something one week, two weeks, versus a board like mine, where we'd like to look at long-term, one-year discussions, and some of the other issues we come into there is, you, you, even if we had five people, even if we weren't short form members, we sort of need everyone there, because when we're working through a project, you've got to have everyone that's on your board be present for those kind of things. And I was just, since I was thinking about it, I was going to say, I'm in the college application process with one of my, my second son, and I know they ask questions to sort of have you figure out what kind of schools are right for you. Maybe we could do the same kind of thing for boards. It's like have a thing where people could look and say, you know, what's your time commitment? How much time can you put into something? What time of day can you meet? You know, do you want something that's highly regulatory? Do you want something that's creative? And let people at least say, maybe, if you want, you know, you're on this page because you want to contribute to the town, here are some, maybe this is the right place for you to contribute. Where's a board that's going to be an easy place to start? You know, that kind of thing.
I think we need to refresh our application. A little bit. I think it's old and tired and really doesn't tell us a lot about what we want to know. That's a good point. Sam, you had a comment.
Yeah, I, I, it's really a question...
And I'm going to get to you.
Question to kind of try to combine this whole business of the benefit of somebody that's been on a board long enough with the new coming in. Is there any prohibition against having somebody that's at the end of their third term becoming an alternate for a year, sticking with the board, and is there in an advisory capacity even though they can't vote?
I think we'll ask town council that question. The question is, at the end of three, three-year terms, could someone become an alternate on the board for a period of time?
Frank Duffy, town council. That question has actually never come up. I don't, I don't know the answer to that. I didn't bring a copy of the charter. These term limits are in the charter and we have to follow the language specifically. And I think it says something that they cannot be appointed for more than three consecutive three-year terms. Now, alternates typically are the people who are appointed early in their career on the board, and generally they, they rise up or get appointed as a full-time member, and that's when the three-year term starts, when you become a full-time member. The other way around, I haven't, haven't encountered it, frankly, don't have an answer for it right now. But we'll look at it.
Nancy?
Again, I am a member, I'm the vice chair of the Historical Commission. We have two slightly different entities. We have a member of the school committee who has spoken. Now, the school committee is a committee that is voted in by the town.
Elected.
Yes.
Elected.
An elected committee. There is another difference in some of the comments. The Conservation Commission is a commission that has very adequate administrative help. The Historical Commission and the Historic District Commission, for a while, had very adequate administrative help. They had some administrative help and then very adequate administrative help, and currently they have none. The Historic District Commission has some administrative help, and I think whether a committee or commission has any or no level of administration makes a difference in how it operates.
I think that's a good point, Tim. I'd like to maybe, I don't know how long you want to stay, but I was thinking eight-thirty would probably be a good time to end. I mean, we could go on for a long time.
Sure.
But I have a question. What can, what do you think the selectmen could do that would make your jobs easier? And, and I, I, you know, with bravery, I'd throw it out.
Does the vice school committee have a liaison?
The what?
A liaison. Do we have a vice school committee liaison from the select board?
I believe you do. And I believe it's me. I will, I will attend your meeting.
Well, I just wanted to be able to know who to keep it to.
Yes.
And a cable advisor, can we ask the same question?
Probably, yeah. Same answer. I know, everybody else is doing a better job of their liaison than I am, but I will get to you very, surely I will. Who else? I have five more, I think. I think I have seven altogether, so.
Don Hoffman.
Uh, Don, from the beach committee.
Liaison is definitely a big plus for these committees, speaking for the beach committee. I'm not a committee member and nobody on my committee, on the beach committee right now, has echoed these sentiments, but I can tell you in the past, I've heard rumblings about people who serve on committees, they walk out the door and there's no recognition. And quite possibly, I know you don't want more, you've had enough administrative woes to take care of, but a very small thank you. I do a lot to increase the, the spirit of our of our committees.
Thank you, Don, for that suggestion. I think we did that last year. We had a day of thank you, and I think we should do it again this year, don't you think? Or can we do that?
Definitely, and we also give them a thank you, a letter of thanks.
Yes.
On behalf of the board as well.
Right. So we will have a day of celebrating all of our committee members. And Jim?
Yes, before we lose the thought, the suggestion was made and it kind of fell off the table, to go around and ask the committee chairman about their feelings about this particular section of the code that says, three terms, you must take a year off before you can apply again.
Oh, so we want to take a poll?
We started talking about it and we never got to asking those of us sitting there, because I'm facing that. I'm fading into the sunset in June, so.
So maybe the question should be, are you in favor of eliminating the term limits?
No, forget that, it's a charter.
Would that, well, I know, but I mean, but still, they can express their opinion if they agree. Is that a fair question? Is that what you would like the question to be? If you are in favor of eliminating term limits?
I think it's better that, I think people feel more comfortable if there was a mechanism to say, can a board member who's reached its limit somehow get an exemption? Because I don't think, I don't, I don't know that we want it to be carte blanche, but you might have someone who has special expertise, who's contributed greatly, and that person you do want to try to get an exemption for. Is there a mechanism? Could you put a mechanism in place?
So maybe the question should be, would you be in favor of extending the term beyond the term limits for a member who either requested it or the chairman requested it? Or is that too long a question? Draft?
I would not, I would not be in favor of that, and there are ways around that. There are examples where people will step down for one year and then come back. A person who steps down after three, three-year terms can sit in the audience of any meeting, particularly the ones that they have just stepped down from, and make comments and speak to the people that are still on the committee. They can write letters to the editor. There's plenty of ways for a person who has retired after nine, nine consecutive years to, to continue to participate. I was on the charter review committee and we went over this at great length, and the charter review committee chose not to change that, not to recommend that that policy be changed.
That's a strong argument, Tim.
And just to add to that, I, I have concerns that it could become really a popularity contest, there could be some discord that might come out of it that I just don't think would be productive if it were to be sort of individualized like that. I'm, I'm more in favor of policies that people know the expectations of when they come on.
My term came up and I still came to the meetings afterwards for that year, and was helpful with the items of law that the committee didn't know, and so they were thankful for that. And when I came back on the board again, they put me back in as chairman.
What happens when a complex regulatory board has insufficient people if people resign? And I guess, and the other point I was going to make, I think there's some boards, like mine frankly, wasn't...
That was almost a serious problem for the CONCOM this year. They lost three very experienced people at the same time.
And especially in a, in a board where it takes, you have to learn regulations and understand...
But you've managed.
People saying lost, and I, I take, I take umbrage with that. We did not lose these people. Betsy, my predecessor, was, has contributed as that young man mentioned with, she has communicated with me and been a mentor to this day, and I still, like I said, when I learn, I'm, I'm learning all the time. And I'll be blunt with this. I, I sat in the audience in the nineties, the first time that I came on the board, I sat in the audience for a full year before I saw an appointment. That's how committed I was to make sure, I knew what was expected of me, what the policies were. I sat in that audience for a full year. I'm not trying to blow up my own balloon, but that's how serious I take this. And so when I talk about my feelings about the term limits, it's not to lessen the importance of anybody's position. I think that, as you had made mention, you come into this, you know, if I live near the airpark, I know there's going to be planes. If I live near the, the power lines, I know there's going to be tree cutting, okay? When I get on that board, it's my responsibility as a person to take the oath to understand what I'm pledging myself to do. There is a lot of personal responsibility on this, and if you can't handle it, we've had members have to step down because of different things. Not negative, it's just life. These things happen. We're going to get better, we're going to have a full board again. It's just, these are transitions, and you need, as, as, I don't mean when I say stale, if I, that was improper verbiage for it, I'm sorry about that. I just mean that it's, it's encouraging, it's a regulatory board that I sit on, it's not punitive, and sometimes you just, habits are formed, and that's what I don't want to have happen. I want it, I want it to be consistent, and sometimes that turnover is, promotes the consistency. It's not everybody leaving at the same time. You're, you're having voids that people need to step up and handle. And I think that we have this as in the charter. If you can't get done in nine years of, of term, you know, that's, that's a sad state. It really is.
I want to go out to the public and give the public some time to comment, but before I do, Judy Mignani, you wanted to make a statement, and then we'll come back for some final statements from everybody.
The Finance Committee doesn't...
Can you get, get to the microphone?
Sure.
Thanks. We want everybody at home to hear you, Judy.
Good. The Finance Committee doesn't come under this because we are elected by town meeting. And I agree with Heidi that it's wonderful to have people who have that institutional knowledge from way back. And we have, they're doing quite well. We have a couple of quite young people on it, and we have a couple of quite old people on it, and it works. And they don't get stale, because the committee does change. People change, and as far, I, I need to talk to Lou Frazier, because we have three vacancies. And when I ask people, they say, what are you crazy? Everybody hates the Finance Committee, and that's, that's the concept. And it's not fair. And then we get people on there and they enjoy it, they like it, and we do like our liaison who comes to our meetings, and also Julian, who attends our meetings and is full of information for us. And I, I think that you have to remember there's a huge learning curve when you get on these committees. Thank you, Beth.
Thank you, Judy. Okay, Mark, I know you've had your hand up for a while. And then Paul.
Yeah, Mark Fitterin, fallow waste advisory committee. The first question you asked was, what can the selectmen do to increase participation? It's pretty fun, fundamental and foundational. It states in the charter that when there's an opening, it is to be advertised. They're on the website now, but it's been about a five-month period that these openings weren't advertised. And the last time I saw it in the newspaper is close to a year, I believe, and then they left out a few of them. So, I mean, you have to put it in front of the public or they're not going to be aware that it exists, and that's a big problem. Thanks.
Thank you. Paul?
I didn't bring enough handouts, but maybe you can just share these, and this is the raw data of the raw data committee, so you can look up. You're all ready? Well, Selectman Flynn has... Selectman Flynn earlier suggested that she email everyone a copy of this, so all the chairman of all the committees will get a copy of this.
Okay, that's what I'm going to ask you, because I can't read.
Oh, okay.
That's my concern, but if you send it an email, my program will, will let me read it.
Yeah, and you'll get a co, all the chairman will get a copy from Selectman Flynn. Is that right? She's reading it. You'll send, you'll send a copy of my email to everyone?
Yes, I will. I will send it by email, yes.
Paul Lipton, I live in the Heights.
The report card, that's what I guess.
Well, it is a report card, which is a table, I didn't make it up, I didn't make any copies tonight. And then there's the raw data, that's an attachment, so you'll get that as an email. So I'm Paul Lipton, I live in the Heights, I'm the vice president of the Thalmann Heights Mayor of the Student Group Association, and I run Harbor Watch, but I'm not speaking for either of those groups today, only for myself. So, actually, I'm speaking specifically about Appendix C in the handbook, which is the online posting policy. In 2008, I brought the issue to the board's agreement that committees, that's the information, agendas, and minutes were just not available to the general public. In 2011, they passed a, the online posting policy, which now became part of the handbook last year. So since that time, since 2008, I've been collecting these numbers, and I have, you know, more, there are more, every six months for a while and now every year. And so the, the report card that Selectman Flynn talked about, and by the way, thank you very much for that, I do appreciate it. The report card is good. In 2008, only 30% of the 34 committees at that time were posting agendas online. 100% today, when I did the stats this morning, 100% of the committees are posting their agendas online on time. So you're in compliance with the mass open, open meeting law and also with the town online posting policy. So, and let me say, in 2008, 62% of the committees had never posted an agenda. Not even where they're not on time, they just have never done before. So this is something that, you know, would really make a lot of progress. Minutes are not as good, unfortunately. 33, well, we used to have a, a kind of... 33, well, we used to have a kind of an understanding that if you met, then the next meeting, you would look at the minutes, and there might, you might approve them, and then they would be available. And if there were changes, then they would be available and voted at the second meeting after the meeting. You know, that we're talking about. So, the old rules and the old statistics that I did were based on the second meeting after the meeting in hand. Now, there's a 10-day rule. Okay? So, even if you have a draft of your minutes within 10 days, they should be made available. And we know that all of you are putting your agendas online. So, we know now that everyone knows how to send everything to our town clerk to get online. And so, when I look at the numbers, the minutes, there are only 55% of the committees putting minutes online within that second meeting rule. Only 36% of the committees are putting minutes on within 10 days. That's something, that's a place where we can all improve it. We know what the problem is. Nancy Hayward talked about it. It's staff. The advisory committees don't have staff. And the regulatory committees that even do have staff have too much to do. I want to, you know, I want, well, let me just talk about the statistics a minute again. Minutes that were last posted over one year ago, 12% in 2008. Now, nobody. Everybody's posted some minutes within, well, no, actually, that's not much. Let me go back. Minutes never posted used to be 35%. Now, it's down to 9%. So, 9% of committees are still never, have never posted minutes. 15% have minutes that are two years old, and nobody has minutes that are one-year-old. So, basically, it's either they haven't posted in two years, they're either pretty much on time, or it's been two years or longer. So, that's where we really need to improve them. And I want to, I want to point out, I would apologize to ConCom because, you know, for singling you out. Because the Conservation Committee is a fabulous committee. If any of you haven't watched their meetings, or anybody at home who's watching this hasn't watched their meetings, watch a meeting on Wednesday night. Or go to FCTV.com, look at the governmental Channel 15 video on demand, and watch any of the meetings. ConCom is, it's actually fun to watch their meetings. They're extremely competent. Their office people are competent, and their staff is competent. And they don't have enough. They haven't posted minutes since, they used to post minutes almost regularly up until September of 2012. They haven't posted minutes since then. So, I think it's a staff issue. I don't know what the town can do. I don't know what budgetary issues there are. I don't know if maybe there can be an ombudsman who is one staff person who is hired at a secretary level who could help all the committees get their minutes online, even if they're not on time. Even if they're not full minutes, it would be great to have a decision, case this approved, case this denied. So, you know, if I had the power, I would do it myself. But I don't. So, I don't know who to ask, if it's the Board of Selectmen, if it's the Finance Committee, or if it's something that has to go to town meeting. We really need to help these committees put these minutes online. Because now that we have the agendas, people know what's, what's on the agendas, but they can't get the answers. They go on, you know, you can watch, and so I commend FCTV for this, because within a week to 10 days, every meeting is online. And the longer they've been doing the video on demand, the more meetings they have. So, I looked at a meeting that was three years ago the other day. So, there are a lot of meetings that you can watch, but it takes a lot to watch them. It would be much easier if we could read the minutes online. So, let me just see if there's one. No, not specifically. But I wanted to ask, is there a list of committees that are regulatory versus advisory? That would be nice to have. Or at least on the committee page of every committee. So, every committee has a page. And on that page could be listed whether it's advisory or regulatory, and also whether or not there are openings. And then on the meetings page, it could also be listed whether they're regulatory or advisory. And also, that's another place where it could be listed whether or not there's an opening.
Good suggestions, Paula.
Okay. Any questions for me?
Any questions for Paula? Yes.
Thank you. You described us as fun. So, that's, thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
And as far as, I know that there'll be discussion about what you had just said.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. And I will add that on October 10th, 2014, all the committee vacancies were published in the enterprise, 18 committees showing vacancies. Just so you know, they are out there. Yes.
Paula wrote a good point, Madam Chairman, and I'd like to elaborate on it. If people want to know what took place, FCTV has the videos archived, because I do the second half of the ConCom. You look at the agenda, you find something you're interested in, go through, and you can see it right there and hear exactly every word that was said.
And may I mention, this is an improvement, because in, when I first started putting video on demand, you could just see the video. Now, the agenda is, when you click on a particular date that you want to look at, the agenda is there. And so, you can scroll over, you know, you can use your mouse or whatever, and scroll over to where you think it's going to be in the agenda and watch whatever you want to watch.
That's very good information. Okay. I think it's taught, oh, yes.
I just wanted to make one more suggestion. I'd really like to see an open house that maybe gets tied to another event. Maybe it's set up at the marina, but it might be like some type of volunteerism day. And, you know, there's tables set up by each of the groups and committees, and people can go around and walk and talk and see some materials and get information. It might be really great town activity, and it might be able to tie into something that happens already at the marina, at the band show. So, maybe at the VIPS Feast of Falmouth, there's something to tie it in with volunteerism. It's really about people that love the town and want to help, so, just a suggestion.
Great. Heidi, yes. Jay?
Can I add to that? What our committee is going to be doing is, we're going to be, it's on our agenda, and has been for the last couple of agendas, is to make a flyer or a rack card so that we can put it somewhere when, or like in the town hall, or if we have people that serve on our committee go out and say, you know, this is what I, this is what we do. A picture of our committee and what we do, what we have done, who the members are, and things like that. So, that's another, I think, venue that, along with FCTV. I know FCTV is great, that's how I get my information, because there's no way that I could afford transportation to go to every single meeting. But yet, people say to me, how do you know this? Because I watch FCTV. Or I watch the replay of the videos when I've been away. I take my laptop with me. So.
Sorry, just leave something out. If anyone who's watching tonight wants to have a copy of this raw data, you can email me at falmouthharborwatch@gmail.com. That's one word. Falmouth Harbor Watch. Thank you.
Okay. And for anybody else who is watching tonight, if you think you might be interested in being a member of one of these committees, now you know who the chairs are. They're all very dynamic people who work very hard and really do a lot for the town, and we're grateful to all of them for all the work they do. And you would love being on one of these committees. Truly, you would. So, contact anybody here, and they'll be happy to talk to you and recruit you and tell you how you can fit in very well with their purpose and their mission. So, this is your final opportunity to say something. Sam?
Well, just to add on to that, I mean, our, the point of contact is Diane Davidson at Town Hall. To get ahold of the application, she'll probably email it to you, or she'll make you a copy if you come by Town Hall. But that's the first contact.
And it's also online. The applications are online. You can apply that way as well. Or you can pick up the phone and just call any one of us and say you might be interested. So, any final comments?
Don't we find our liaison? The liaison select.
You know what? We will email each of you the list of the liaisons, if you don't know who they are. But each of us cover all of the committees, so. And some are doing a much better job than others, so, anyway.
Pat, we should have their sign-in sheet somewhere.
Oh, is there another sign-in sheet down at your end?
On that one. Oh, it's up there.
Oh, it's over there?
Great.
All right. Well, I want to thank you so much for being here. We're going to incorporate a lot of your suggestions. Some of them we can put in the document, and others we'll handle another way. And thank you so much for coming, and good night.
And keep up the good work.
And keep up the good work.
Appreciate it.